Susan Coop take a test?
Yes, Valerie Anderson.
Here early.
Tony Bedini is absent. Alan Brown.
Yes ma'am.
Gregory Pava is absent. Michelle Gora, Emily Hibbert. James Hirschfield. Kelly Lott is absent. Jennifer Pooty. Michael Sinastra is absent. Iain Fear and Peter Tagley.
Next I have this presentation, Superintendent for the Budget for 2015 and 16, Dr. Cassinou.
Okay, good evening everyone, thank you for coming in the audience. This is the fiscal year 2016 budget, so I'm happy to present it tonight. You all know our vision. I never am able to memorize the vision. The vision should be big ideas that we all agree with. Our staff, our parents, our board worked very hard to put it together. We're looking for students who are compassionate, creative, students who love to learn, students who are prepared when they go into the global society. They persevere, they're able to fail and continue. They are empowered with knowledge and in character. And this is really important to us and I really believe we do a very good job at this. So this is what the foundation of our budget is. To make sure that this vision comes alive for all of our students as best as we can. Our mission, optimize student achievement, very important. We are working on every day making student achievement more visible. And we're always looking for increases in student achievement. And I think with the goal of making some of our tests more important and to put a little more focus on it, we are doing that. I'm not saying teaching to the test, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is putting more emphasis on students being able to take tests, being able to understand strategies to help them take tests. And to make sure that when they sit down and they take a test, they have all the skills and strategies they need to be successful. One of the great things about our new assessments with the state and even in the classroom is they're directly aligned with instruction and the Common Core and it's not something extra, okay? The tests are really assessing what we're teaching and what students are learning, so they're good tests, but I think it's important that we put some emphasis on that. It's important to our community. But it's also important to make sure every student excels in student achievement at their level of understanding. So if you're here, we want growth to hear. If you're here, we want growth to hear. You're here, we want growth to hear. We want to see movement, we want to see improvement. Building a collaborative learning environment in our schools, very important to us. Working with the community, working with the colleges, working with different resps and organizations, very important to us. And of course, helping students to be engaged citizens. So these are the things, again, that are the foundation of our budget. People always ask me about the plan. What's the plan for the region? What are you planning on doing? So I wanted to give some key points to what my plan was at this point. And certainly plans can always be revisited and revised, but right now, this is my plan. That the three elementary schools will remain open in each town. Reach will remain at WPS. As enrollment numbers decrease, and I know we're doing everything possible to reverse that trend, but as they decrease, we will continue to look at multi-grade classrooms in each school. Right now, it is only at Burnham, but as the numbers and the students keep dwindling, it's definitely going to be happening in Booth Free very soon and maybe Washington Peron or down the pipe. When I think about multi-grade classrooms, I really want to assure everyone that they will be the best they can be. Students will be serviced there as best as we can to make sure that we are meeting their needs, educationally, socially. And we want to make sure that our academic programs are always challenging, regardless of whatever configuration our students are in. And at this time, we are not looking at any other consolidation options for the elementary schools. That's at this time. If something happens in the future, the board will look at that. But right now, we are just moving forward. Come on in!
What are we waiting for?
Six minutes, the meeting started because it's the budget presentation. That's okay, I'm going to just do this sheet again because this is really, you haven't missed much. Just started a little late, but welcome, we're glad you're all here. I just went over the vision and the mission of the district that we all know. That's the foundation of any budget program. And now I'm just talking about the plan. So when I think about the plan for Region 12, the first piece is that at this point, the three elementary schools will remain open. Reach will remain at WPS. As enrollment numbers decrease, we will look into multi-grade classrooms in each school, making sure that they're the best they can be. And at this time, we're not looking for any other consolidation options at the elementary schools. So then, when I do the plan for Region 12, Chapag Valley School will remain a comprehensive school with an agri-science STEM program. The region will do some repair work at Chapag in the 2015 and 16 budgets. We've already started in this school year to do some of the work from that master list that we all talked about, that eight million list. And we are planning to go to referendum for the agri-science STEM program and the renovation of the Chapag Science Wing in September of 2015. That's the plan right now. Some of this plan, I haven't really talked to the board about, just moving forward with things that are going on and we can always tweak things, but that is the plan as of today. The plan for Chapag, just a couple of more things. The agri-science application is at Harold Macken's office. He is reviewing it. He will come back and ask us for more information. They'll come to visit. Then what will happen is it will be sent to the legislature and we're hoping to get the funding. As you all know, there are two bills right now, proposed bill. One is to get the funding from 80 to 95%. One is to get an extension of the date to November 15th. So that this way, when we go to referendum in September, we know the exact amount to ask the communities. And we feel that's really important. With that said, I've been doing a lot of work with the legislatures, trying to get, you know, information out there to them, trying to gain their support. Michelle Gora, two students from Chapag and myself are going to Cave on the Hill, March 24th, and we're going again. See if we can, you know, put our two cents in about this. But we are getting a lot of positive information from people who are either in the legislature or around the legislature about both of the proposals and the ag program. We're renovating the science wing, that's going to happen. Hopefully in the next couple of meetings, you will get the Ed Spex for the science labs and you will then get the drawings from Castle Booze, both Lori and Karen Files. Word Ferrer and Karen Files are going to make a presentation to the Facility Committee on March 23rd for the needs of the science program. And then, as we continue, after we get the science wing going, after we get the ag science program moving along, then the board is going to have to come back and look at some of the other repairs that need to be done to this building and either put in the budgets or from future funding. So those are the plans there. The plan to continue, a big part of the plan is working on promoting Region 12, sharing great things that are going on in our school, letting people know we are committed to our schools so that when we have families moving in, they know that there's a plan, we're moving forward. We are not going anywhere and continuous working with Ann Baldwin, who has been a big help to us. It's an exciting time in the region, it really is. There's a lot of great things going on. Kids are involved in a lot of great programs. I wanted to let you know and remind you that in May, the Board of Education voted unanimously to support all of the schools and that we have no intention on closing Chapag. We have no intention on doing that. So I think we can pass that on to prospective families, to prospective students, but we're not going anywhere. So that is that. So, budget priorities. Even though the long range plan was, I'm sorry, the strategic plan was written a couple of years ago, it does go to 2017. And we will start probably next year thinking about revising that. It's the district in rewriting, but I'm still working off the former plan because there's still a lot of work to do. So just as a reminder, the first goal is curriculum. The second goal is technology. And the third goal is dealing with the aging facilities and the declining enrollment. We make our plans based on our goals of the region and what's best for our students. Trying to put a budget together is really part of a balanced approach to really make sure that we meet the needs of our students, that we do what's best for our schools and our buildings, and also to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers. Very important. So that's what we are doing. Curriculum instruction, the budget really supports continuous rewriting, tweaking of our curriculum. Curriculum is a living document. It's always continuously improved. We've done a lot of work this year. I'm very proud of the staff who has worked on that. But in every budget, there's always work to work on our curriculum. Embedded in the Common Core standards. And I want you to know, there's a lot, Common Core standards get so politically entangled. I support the Common Core standards. I think our administrative support, the Common Core standards. We've always had standards, okay? And so this is nothing new. It's just these standards are very deep. They have high standards for everyone and high expectations. And it's a change and people don't like change. So that kind of thing has made them a little bit iffy in some people's minds, but it really is something that, again, we believe in. The new assessments. We always make sure that our students are prepared again for assessments. PD, very important. Professional development for teachers and staff is very important. You have to teach teachers all about the new initiatives. If not, they're not ready when they get in front of our kids. And then, most importantly in my mind, is getting our students ready for college and/or career. That's when you're successful, when your students know what they're going to do. There's a plan when they graduate from high school about what they're going to do next. So that's really, really important. Academic opportunities. This budget continues all of the academic programs that we have, including virtual high school, the Academy of Digital Arts and Sciences, more electives, our interventions. We're getting better at that, we're not perfect at that yet, but helping students who need support in different areas. Continuous instruction for students, making sure that they're taking the sciences and the maths and everything that they need so that they're able to graduate and they have the right progression of courses. Minds in Motion is a program from the Connecticut Association of the Gifted, where we're going to have a Saturday workshop for any students, but it's really geared for gifted students, creative students, students who need enrichment. I'm hoping that it's something that the district really enjoys. And then we can do more activities for our gifted students. I've heard from parents that they want to see more of that and I certainly am in favor of that. So I think that's going to be something really beneficial. Words Our Way is a spelling program that, this is the wrong, wow. I hope nothing else is wrong on here because this is not my last, this is not my last PowerPoint because today I changed it and said words their way. So let's hope this is the right PowerPoint, everybody. That's supposed to say words their way. And that is a spelling program for the elementary schools. And then we have AP Biology textbooks because the curriculum had changed by the AP. And that's done by the College Board. And then we have some money in cultural enrichment for the schools so that they're able to bring in some more, not a lot of money. It's $5,000 for the Chapag and $5,000 total for the elementaries, but bring in some more cultural enrichment. And that would be in conjunction with the principals, whether they're going to bring in ASCP or they're going to bring in another program. That's something that I thought would be beneficial. So I'm hoping, let's see, PD, build capacity. It creates positive professional development and positive professional development in our professional learning communities. When you hear us talking about PLCs, those are when teachers get together. They look at student work, they look at student data, and they try to plan accordingly to meet the needs of all of the students. I think the board and the communities, excuse me, understands the importance of professional development. You always support that in a positive way. And it helps staff be reflective and collaborative and it focuses on research and data, which is important. Our technology, we're continuing with our Google Chromebook device program and we can get into that further on, but right now, we have grades five to 12 and then we have it piloting, are we in three now? We're piloting in grade two, right?
Grade two.
Right, but we're in three also.
Oh yeah, we're three 12.
Three 12 now, yes, which is fabulous. And I can tell you, when the Sherman families hear that, they're very excited about that. And Karen and her team has now devised a technology plan so that we are upkeeping the technology as we move forward. And then this is the last year, as after this year, everyone who needs a smart board will have a smart board. And then again, we'll start looking at that cycle. This little boy here, I don't know his name. He's in fifth grade, he was at the...
Michael.
Michael. Michael wanted his picture so badly taken with RSRO. So I took his picture. And this was at the Innovation Fair and he was so happy. So I said I have to put him in my budget. And so safety and security is really important. So you'll see that we do have monies in the budget for safety and security. So, when we prepare the budget, I really bow to Bob and kind of do what he's always done because it's always worked out. So basically, the administrators and the directors of all the programs submit a budget. They sit down with me and Bob and we really talk them line by line to find out what is meant, especially when there's an increase. And then we make some cuts, I make some cuts usually. And then we bring in the finance department and the towns, if they would like to come, we go through the budget and then we kind of put it together and this is what we have. So the original budget request from the administrators was down 0.04% from last year. And then I reduced the budget by another almost $92,000, which was down by 0.43%. And so the budget I am going to present tonight is a decrease of 0.46%. So let's see exactly what that means. I won't go through every line, but you can see in personnel and salaries, we're up about 1.56%. There are no major changes here. We have, in the past couple of months, it's really been this year, a couple of our more tenured staff has left, especially a couple of fifth grade teachers in the region. And we've hired teachers really right out of school. So that is always a savings of a little money. But that goes up contractually, there's always money there. Areas of significant change, salaries are up, I said. Benefits are down. And again, that's because of Bob and his team. We have new contracts with many of the unions where they are now on a, tell me the exact...
High deductible health plan.
Right, high deductible health plan, which has saved the region some money. And it's also beneficial to the staff. Everyone who I know who's on that likes the plan. So that has saved some money. So who goes to Bob and his team for that? We're up a little bit on purchase services, supplies. We really try very hard to make sure that we only order what we need. And we're also trying very hard to get the three elementary schools more aligned so that they're all spending the percentage of students that they have. That wasn't the case. Oh, I'm sorry, which one?
Supplies.
And supplies had to do with heating oil too. I thought there was a lot of money for just pencils. Okay, it's oil. So areas of significant change, we have reduced staff. We have currently, we're reducing two full-time equivalents, a science teacher at Chapag and an elementary interventionist. And then we are reducing, I am recommending, reduction of the nursing hours at Booth Free and Burnham. My original plan was to reduce one nurse and Mrs. Colella asked if we could do four hours a day at each building, 10 to two. So that's what I have there right now. We are adding a point two psychologist, we would like to anyway, one day. Addition of a half a custodian at WPS. They really, it's a much larger building and with Reach being there, they really need that. And an addition of a point two TV support, which just would be someone in the line of a para to help us do some of the filming. What I would like to do is have like Tuesdays is filming day. We just are all over the region filming TV shows, et cetera, for YouTube, for our webpage, for whoever. So that's significant change in staffing. Program improvements. Oh, you know what, I'm going to tell you what I did, I'm going to be honest. Full disclosure, I didn't see Words Our Way on the other side. I only saw it on this one, so I changed this. This is the last one and I have a mistake. That's okay, that's why they put erases on pencils. So anyway, so more of the program improvements, the cultural enrichment I talked to about, the Minds in Motion I talked to about. You'll see, I think it's $21,000 and change for pole vaulting equipment here at the high school. Matt Paracci asked for that. If we do not buy it, we can no longer pole vault. So that's a need. We put in $5,000 for Chapag to support the theater program. So that would be the plays and the musicals that the students do, some extra money for supplies or scripts or whatever to help them there. Put in the budget, it's about $3,000. Every year Wesleyan University does a month-long program, residency program for one student in each high school. And it is a scholarship and I thought it would be nice for the Board of Education to be able to give a scholarship to one, I think it's a junior. And it can be an art student, a music student, a drama student, a vocal student. But a lot of, almost all of the schools do it in the state and I think it would be something very beneficial. Then you would have that student come back and maybe as part of their senior project, work with some of the students or the other schools, et cetera. I just think it's something important to do. Words Their Way, correctly, a spelling program. AP Bio textbooks and digital media subscriptions. Just so you know, people thought that when we started to get rid of textbooks and books, oh, it would be free, there would be no cost. You just pay for it and it's just in the digital media subscriptions. So you're not saving anything. There's also some funds in there to start and continue the Alumni Association, which we've started. We need to do some network wiring. Planetarium repairs, we want to get that up and running. An opening day speaker for the staff, I think that's $1,500. Some money for the Digital Arts and Science Program because Ed Connection has lost their grant. So we need to provide some of that funding. And then there's some money in there for the agri-science STEM study that we're going to be moving forward with. So when we get back to the benefits, you can see here, with the employees, we're down $460,000. And again, that really is due to the medical insurance. And plus, I think a lot of families left and more singles came on. Am I right, Bob? Yes. And a better renewal rate, so. And that's not always the case, so that's a good job for us. Purchased professional and technical services. This is very similar. We are saving some money in NIAS because NIAS will be over and the big pot of money this year that you need to put the visiting team in hotels and all of that stuff will go away, it'll come back in 10 years. So that's what brought this down. But it went up in other areas, you can see. Purchased property services were up 2.72%. Again, everything's very similar. Do I talk about building your parent up, Keith? Why that's low? It's similar, nothing. Other purchase services, we're up 2.07%. And this is transportation, really. Transportation is very expensive. There's no way of getting around transportation. We have a very large area. We also have had, this year especially, a couple of students who now are being outplaced and that impacts on transportation. So there's really just no way of getting around that. Supplies, we're down by 7.14%. And that's basically from the oil, the heating oil that Bob talked about. We are buying less textbooks this year. And again, the library books and periodicals is down a little bit, but the subscriptions is up. That's what happens. Here you have the property program improvements. And again, we're up 38.74. Now you will see here that in the capital facilities, we've added about $270,000. And that money is what I was talking about when I said you're going to take money from that master list to do the repairs at Chapag and put some money in the budget. Okay, so that is why this one is really up. Dues and fees is very similar. And at future meetings, Bob can talk to you about how our debt service is starting to go down. So I think we took off, well, it was about savings of $15,000 this year for next year. So we're in very good shape financially. And this is the budget distribution by town, so you're aware. Bridgewater is going down 6.66% in their math. Roxbury is up 2.13%. And Washington is up 0.48%. And those are the numbers, how it breaks out. And that's based on the enrollment in each school. So the next steps, you know, as we think about the budget and we think about this exciting time, we really need everybody here, number one, to help us promote our region and to really let everyone know we have excellent schools. We really do, we have excellent, excellent schools. If they need proof, you know, send them to the website, send them to Region Review, have them call me, have them watch our YouTube channel. There's just so many great things going on. So we need everyone here to really spread that word, it's very important. And to support our schools, all of our schools. You know, we have a chance to be the 20th Agri-science STEM program. We have a chance to have that paid almost fully by the state, bring in all of these students to our area. And I believe if we can get that school off and running and really as good... and really, as good and great as it can be, that's gonna attract more families to this region. So that's a win-win for everyone. So I'm happy about that, happy about that. And I just wanna thank everyone for coming, the board for their support, communities for their support of our schools and our children. Very supportive community, and we appreciate all you do for us.
Can we ask a question?
The chairperson, yes?
Can we have a question?
Yes, the way you applied to. Yes. You asked for a copy of it.
Oh, yes. It's gonna be online, we've everything at the right now, and it's gonna be online tomorrow.
My name is, you might have one question. Why is the statement made, you've made, that you're gonna look at consolidation again in the future? That's what it's, that's what he said from the first page. I mean, I think, I would think you have gotten the message that...
I may, maybe I didn't.
Bridgewater is not gonna consolidate.
I, I...
He said that there's three schools remaining.
We're naming each town. He said she's not gonna consolidate this time. Consolidated up, other up.
She said that at this time, they're not looking at consolidation, but you're not sure what the board is gonna do next.
It's not, it's, I really was speaking of the Long Range Planning Committee. They were talking about possible other configurations of the schools. We're not, the first statement says it all. The three elementary schools remain open in each town. We're not, we're not closing any school. All the schools are staying open. There is some chatter out there about possibly doing some remixing of children, et cetera, et cetera. But, no, let's make sure, let me say this again, because I started with this, and I thought I made it clear. Region twelve is not closing any of their schools. And we are not consolidating the elementary schools. So from this point on, we have three elementary schools, we have a six-twelve school, and we are gonna be remain open forever, as far as I'm concerned.
Peter, it's your call. Is there anyone else who has a question? She stated, we are proposing Kirk Street, Bridgewater. I just wanted to report that Chaparral won four to two.
Oh, thank you. So we got the copy for anybody.
I understand, that's great.
That's wonderful. It's been online, I'll give you...
Superintendent? What else is there?
Yes, I'm gonna say excellent project, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. That's it?
Turn to the screen. Is there most for her? Give a second to you.
The next meeting. It's not on the agenda for the next one.
All right, just a moment, your mom wasn't present tonight?
Hi.
Moving on to the regular meeting, March nineteen, that was a fix in. Let's take a fifteen minutes.
Ari Anderson, I'm still here.
Tony Bedini.
Alan Brown.
Greg.
Rigorikawa.
Here.
Michelle Gora is absent.
Emily Silver?
Here.
James Hirschfield.
Yes.
Kelly Robinson. Jennifer Cody, here. Michael Sumacho is absent. I am here, and Peter Taggert.
Here.
Is there, I don't know if the two is a public document, I object to items.
I have a public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wayne, right now, attend the items.
That's Wayne Wright, I think tonight...
Mr. Wayne, do I have to stand up, please?
Sure. I think tonight on the agenda, there's some subject about the STEM Agroscience program.
That's an update.
Oh, an update, okay. There's an update on the application. I notice in the application, I believe on page twenty-one, there is a reference to a spreadsheet that is attached to the application, was not available. I assume that spreadsheet, since it's part of the application, is a public document?
Yes, I assume so.
And is available to the public, is that correct?
Should be, yes, it is.
It says that, the spreadsheet says the space needs for the Agri-science program.
I'm sure it's available, have you asked for it at the office?
I have not yet, but I just wanna verify if I asked for it and I could get it.
It's part of the application, it's a public document.
Thank you.
Is anyone else who'd like to address this? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
When Mrs. Gallo made the presentation, she explained that she didn't give all the information, because it was all in that binder. And so that's where all of that information is. Mrs. Gallo unfortunately is homesick, and that's where the binder is. So she should be here tomorrow. So I will, if you call the office and tell us what you want a copy of, we'll be happy to make the copy and send it to you.
I requested the copy of that to Alan.
Okay.
Alan knows about it.
He wants a copy of the full, I have the full up in here. I could find you if I have to. All right, I have three minutes to send agenda, anyone who wants to move anything from the agenda? Has he nothing to prove, or the chair have no report?
Yes, a couple of things. Just a reminder to the board, Mrs. Gallo is waiting to hear if you are coming to the Sunday reception, March twenty-second. I think we've only heard from Val, other than now.
That's not true.
Two or three, yes. Okay, that's fine. Okay, so, yes, Gregory, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, no problem. It may just, it may just be that Kim didn't, and Debbie crisscrossed, it's fine. It's the twenty-second at one o'clock, it's a Sunday. Here, one o'clock, yes. Good. Okay, great, perfect. No worries. We're really looking forward, I want you to know, to the NIAS visit, because we're ready. And I think it's gonna be a good visit. I also sent an email, we have a retreat scheduled for March thirtieth, which some people can't go to. I invited Ann Baldwin to that, to continue some of our work. She can't be here, but she could be here the thirty-first. So I heard from Alan, he could do the thirty-first, I heard from Sue. She could not, it's a Tuesday night. So just let me know tomorrow. Pete, you're good? And Tony, you're good? Okay, can let me know tomorrow, I know Greg, you're not good. So if not, maybe we'll just reschedule it if we don't have enough people. So just an update on the Agroscience application, just wanted to let you know where we were, which I did in the budget, but I'm happy to do it again. The application is at the state, we're waiting to hear back, if they want any questions answered, or more information. Although there is a sketch in the plan that we sent, it is a very, very sketchy sketch. And we have Charlie Booth from Castle Booth working on more of a plan. We knew when we handed in the application, everything wouldn't be just so, but we wanted to get it into their hands. So that's who we are at that. Michelle Gora and I are going with two students to Cave on the Hill. We are gonna bring some goodies, we're gonna bring some letters from the students. We're really gonna try to make an impact that day. And we are shooting for, and this is just a date, so we can work backwards, September fifteenth, as the date of the referendum for the Agroscience, and for the science labs. And that's just to work backwards with bond council, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's who we are. As soon as we have more information, I'll be happy to share that with you. Tomorrow, we are having our second meeting with our little publicity group that's working with Ann Baldwin. It's Carolyn Dwyer, Barbara Henry, and Dan Schair, myself, and Ann, to make some inroads on how we can all work together. So we're working on that. And I just wanted to share with you, now that I have some numbers here. We currently have twenty-nine students in kindergarten, and one almost enrolled from out of district at Booth Free. So we have fifteen at WPS, we'll have nine if that student enrolls at Booth Free. Right now we have eight, and we have six at Burnham School. And then Bob gave me this last week. We are officially number one, not that we wanna be, but we are the highest per cost per pupil in the state. We were out, we just passed Sharon in Cornwall. So I'll pass this around.
What's the number?
What's the number?
Yeah.
Well, there's different numbers, I guess it's twenty-six thousand, one hundred thirty-seven. With an average daily, this is, this is the numbers from two thousand thirteen, fourteen. An average daily membership of seven hundred and sixty-two point thirty-nine students. Yes?
It's a very misleading figure, because in the sense that the, putting more students in the building knocks those numbers down. And you can't reduce that number, because you're stuck with the fact of delivering all the educational programs you have to deliver. So that number is just the result of not having enough students. But you can't reduce the program, you can't cut your program to make that number go down. So the number goes down if you add a hundred, five hundred, seven hundred students. So that's the dilemma that we face.
If you study these numbers for any length of time, over a series of time, the same phenomenon happens in the rural northwest quarter, if you will. The devisers are keep getting smaller and smaller, and you're right, there's only so much you can remove, before you can't remove anymore. And so you're bumping up a smaller and smaller divisor all the time.
Well, here's the concern.
We just shop by people because they're, are spelled faster than others.
But what concerns me for the Public Relations Desk Board, is that when people see the number, since they don't participate, as we do, and many people who use this system, they get a false vision of what things really are costing, and why they're costing. We need to deal with that. Because when you go to the public with the budget, even though you may show a negative budget, whatever, that number of twenty-six thousand is still there, and it has a negative impact on the system. So we need to confront that in a manner that people can realize what's behind all of these issues and costs. And we really have to address that.
Well, the cost of the system, it's accounting costs.
But I think we have to do something from the Public Relations Department, or maybe we can bring that up.
Talk to Ann about that.
Because this is what you hear. In twenty-five years, I've heard, so.
And that's my report, thank you.
Can I, aren't there students who aren't counted? I remember, I believe Ms. O'Hara was saying, suffering from eighteen and older. Are they counted? Is there population?
There's one student, I think, that falls into that category.
And that rate in terms of the eighteen and older?
They're counted in the average daily membership, they're not counted resident in the building.
So they wouldn't have an...
So the state picks it up in that, when Pat referred to the average daily membership, it gets picked up in that number.
And that would have an impact on the per pupil cost?
Yeah, but it's so, it's, it's really number one.
Anyone else? All right, moving on, some reports, Michelle, I think there's another report to education.
Education Connection, she's also in the facilities, Greg.
Well, I just wanted to call everyone's attention. I think the minutes of meetings that are attached, that are sent to you, are fairly self-explanatory. The primary thing that we discussed, and I'm not sure I reported much on, is the configuration of the science labs. And what we're basically waiting for is a little bit of information the administration is developing, to try to explain to us what our needs are going to be for science labs, if we approve the STEM program, the AgroSTEM program, and if we don't. So to know whether we need two, three, four, or five. Oh, these are not STEM Agroscience labs, these are the basic core science course labs. We're going to have to, to fix those, those labs have to be rebuilt. And there's a proposal on the table from Charles Booth, Castle Booth, to renovate those, they're gonna do, strip the building down. The far end of the science building, they're gonna strip it down, and they're going to rebuild within the existing shell. And the cost for rebuilding, there are gonna be five classrooms involved, and one teacher area. Two of those are gonna be full labs, with full stations. The other two are going, the other three were proposed in this original study to be classrooms that have demonstration labs at the front, so they don't have multiple stations with gas and water. If we do that and build it for right now, we might be marginal, if not underserving what we have. We need more labs, right now we have four science labs that meet in a given period. Not all of them necessarily require full labs. So the idea was, before we could figure out whether it's two, three, four, or five labs, we need to get the enrollment information, the projections, and the impact that the STEM Agro program has. If you bring in three hundred kids, they have to take core science labs, like physics, chemistry, and earth science, and those kind of things, so they're gonna need those lab classrooms. So if we have to do that project, the cost of roughly doing two full labs and three demonstration labs was roughly about two point nine seven five million dollars. And each demonstration classroom, you convert from a demonstration lab to a full lab, originally you thought it was gonna add half a million dollars a lab, but it's actually, turns out it's gonna be closer to three hundred thousand. So it's gonna add a bit of money to the cost of renovating the science facilities to do this. And part of the reason is, because it's an absolute gutted rebuild of that whole area. And the reason each lab upgrade costs that much is because it involves putting gas and water in all of those stations within the lab. So again, we are, it's premature at this point to decide what we need to put to record them on this, until we get that other information, we hope to have this month. And so the next time we meet, I should be able to come back to you with a recommendation. I hope, the next time we meet, I'll be able to come back to you with a recommendation for a project to fix these science labs. And get us back where we need to be, we have to find lab facilities here in Burnham.
All right, any questions, Greg?
Greg, do you know if those ice dams were, they were put in place at Burnham?
Well, the last time I looked, it was a while ago, so I don't know if they've been done. I don't think Don's here.
That's not, but I think so, I remember speaking about that. Do you remember that, Don? The ice dams at Burnham?
Yeah, there is a holdup, there was a reschedule.
Yeah, there was a reschedule, I'm not sure if they came back, John.
I don't think they're in, it's my guess, is I don't think they're in. And I don't know why. So I'll try to find the answer, that's what I'm trying to do. Well, yeah, the interesting thing is, is it does appear that there has been some ice on the edge of that roof, but it seems to be broken up reasonably well, there's no large sheets so far. Oh, the winter's almost over, so.
Any other questions? Thanks, Greg, for that report. Look forward to that information back from you. My name is Valerie, anything?
Yes, actually, we've been a bit busy. We met, well, we've been part of the budget process, thanks to Pat and Bob, and the illustrators inviting us to their presentations, and so we've been aware where the budget was going. Very pleased to see that we have decreased. In the interim, just before this meeting, we had a visit from the Wells Fargo Pension, Classified Pension Trust people. Eric Chernoff and...
Joe DiPaolo.
Thank you. And we basically have about five point three million under their management for the classified pension. We, our obligation is to get about twenty thousand a month to about, we have about thirty-three people in the pension plan, and our obligation is to pay about twenty thousand a monthly pension.
Thirty-three drawing from the budget.
Thirty-three drawing, thank you. So we made a change from Bank of America to Wells Fargo. We had a presentation, and they went over the portfolio as they reconstructed it, and gave us, I think, a very conservative approach to where we are going with the portfolio, aiming for approximately sixty-seven percent growth, but there are some expenses to that. However, we're in a really good pension. We have, certainly our contribution is sufficient each and every budget year thus far. So being conservative is probably a very good way to go. It is a sixty-fourty split, sixty percent equity, it's forty percent fixed. And we are going to revisit, and I have show and tell, for anyone who wants to see. And we are going to revisit and, and I have show and tell, for anyone who wants to see, where we are at the pension right now and what the prospects are for growth. And we are going to revisit this, if anyone wants to see, maybe the public, in September. Give them along six months and see where we go. And then after that, hopefully, just meet once a year because it seems to be a very sound conservative approach. And then we are, Bob has developed a draft for the Sherman bus contract, uh, student contract, sorry, for tuition. And he's put together some numbers that we will explore further and rewrite the Sherman contract altogether. And there's some debate there about whether we continue with the bus subsidy or not. Probably will continue. And then, but that'll be up to the board. But we will review it. And we went over very briefly financials and which we have 3.7% remaining or $795,000. And all the accounts were fine. And that is it.
Can I just?
Yes.
I just emailed Don and he said, no, that they're not in. It's a supplier issue. So I think it's beyond our control because I know what he was working on the day after we approved it. I don't know. I'll look into it tomorrow.
Any questions?
So no one's excited about pension plans?
No, thank you for doing the work.
I have a couple of questions for you. Did the, have they given you some comparison in terms of their allocations between what some other districts and other pension plans of similar nature are doing? Are we an outlier or are we within the realm of what other pension plans do?
Well, in some cases, of course, the pension is fully contributed. So we tend to be not an outlier. We're very, we are normal if not on the acceptable, really acceptable side. And the 60-40 split is what they recommend for most. And they see no reason to be more aggressive because there's not going to be necessarily any shortfall that we can predict right now. But they're going to revisit the portfolio, make changes as needed. But this is basically what they suggest. It's kind of the industry standard for now.
All right, then the other question is whether, have they given any indication of what their strategy is in terms of why they selected the equity investments in particular that they've selected? Do they have a, is there a going strategy? Do we have any, anything we're trying to achieve?
It sounds like you should have been to the last meeting.
Well, I would have been there, but.
Well, it's just about conservative growth to cover expenses. And there is some interest in international growth, international mutual funds that are tempered. I mean, basically, we're not in individual stock, obviously. We have been B of A and now it's all mutual funds. And once again, it's almost boilerplate what we're doing. And just one more issue, there's about 3% that's held in cash, which is also what is recommended and considered fairly conservative to cover costs. So there's nothing exciting and I think we asked the right questions and...
They're looking at a balanced approach to maintain the equity, to fund this thing without causing us to have ups and downs all the time. So the mutual fund approach seems to make more sense because we're not chasing dollars. So we've gotten to where we needed to be and now we need to just maintain it and just fund it properly and it'll be fun.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry I couldn't attend the meeting. The thing is, is that I would be, maybe I can get to the next one where they're going to be or find out what their equity content. And the reason I ask about equity investment strategies is that if you were to plot on a graph up on that screen, the number of equity investment firms, the number of equity investment portfolios, the number of mutual funds that have consistently outperformed Standard and Poor's 500 or any other market index you choose, the graph will be lonely. It will be exactly none. Long-term, no one outperforms, if you're just going to buy something and stick with it, no one ever outperforms just buying the market. It's just, it's one of those things. You're going to have years when you do outperform it and you're going to have years when grossly underperform it. And as a result, you want the consistent long-term performance is exactly, no one is able to outperform the market as an entity. However, that doesn't mean you don't invest in funds. And that's why I asked about strategy, because sometimes you want to, you want to use the investment in the market. You want to be not just investing, investing in a basic market, buy a iShare or something like that because you want to really do something in particular to hedge a potential risk. And that's sometimes what we do. But I will try to attend the next meeting. You said you're going to be here in the fall?
We're just contacting you.
Yeah, we're going to sit in September if Bob is going to. And then also, you know, I was frankly surprised that we're talking 40% fixed, 60 equity. But indeed, these, I mean, these are mutual funds and they're conservative. And it's public funds. We can't take risks. We certainly have to fund the pension plan.
I think they only have one that's chasing or doing the 70/30.
Kind of all the districts.
All of the ones that they're managing right now.
And the other part of this is...
Because they're not managing the state of Connecticut or the ones that are severely underfunded.
And the other thing is not to, because this is a good conservative approach, not to churn it too much and incur more expense.
Definitely.
And so I think there's a lot of good detail in here that breaks down the time or holdings of each of the mutual funds. It's a lot of good includes.
They're all the bad sections.
Yeah. So we have other copies plus the ones that are circulated.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other questions for the government? Negotiations, Greg?
Yeah, we are in negotiation with the non-certified staff currently as the the custodians, the cafeteria workers, the, there's some carers and others that are at that non-certified union. We have commenced negotiations. We have had it precisely once. And we will both continue beyond, I'll go very long, March and April.
It's the non-certified staff, so it's the secretarial staff, plus the air professionals, plus the cafeteria, plus the custodians.
Two different unions.
Two separate.
Two separate negotiations for those groups.
Okay. Awesome. We're just doing our usual thing. I'll get back to the next meeting. I don't want to explain.
Uh, yeah, we met two weeks ago. And we covered our usual issues of supporting the Shapaw Innovation Plan, Agri-science, and also our long-range plan for the, for the, especially for the elementary schools, which we feel, at least I feel, and there are other people in the community who feel such a plan needs to at least be roughed out, if not be finalized, in order to give certain, certain people confidence that we have a plan other than just the Agri-science to bolster student population in schools. Well, that's the thing. It's so far, according to our budget, as you see here, we're looking at multi-grade classrooms. And we have a presentation coming up in our next meeting on the 23rd.
They're not planned for this year.
No, they're not planned for this year, coming up. And that's the thing, is we have, we have some time to work on this. That is, it's underway now in, as Dr. Costino said in her budget presentation, it's underway now at Burnham and it's probably around the corner at Booth. We're calling them, I like calling them multi-grade classrooms. In our meeting, Kelly Lott pointed out that we already have multi-age classrooms because there are usually three ages in every class, depending on when children are enrolled or depending on, you know, people who were brought up or carried back. So multi-grade might be a better way to think about this going forward. And we already have that in place and are looking towards that. But I also feel that there are great cost savings aspects to a K235 blend between Booth and Burnham, which I, from what I can tell, there are as many people for that and against that as there are people for and against multi-grade classrooms. So a lot of this will, you know, depending on when we look into these, will cause satisfaction and disruption, depending on who we just look. Luckily, as we've said, we're not under the gun now to launch either way, to increase multi-grade classrooms as Dr. Costino said in the budget, nor going to K235. Although what I would like to do is to, even though we have a presentation on multi-grade in two weeks, I'd also like to find out a little more about the pros and cons of a splitting of classes between Roxbury and Bridgewater. Because there are transportation complications, but there are also great cuts possible as far as expenses. We have to see not only how those balance each other out, but also how our administration, board, and communities feel about those, vis a vis the other option. These are kind of things that, you know, both of these really have to do with, once again, the issue that we really covered a lot in Dr. Costino's presentation, giving the education, giving the children of the region the best possible education. And they solve that in different ways. One of the things we really have to look towards is not only dealing with the fact that with reduced class sizes, you have imbalances sometimes of the sexes. There are people who really are not happy if they have the only girl in the class and boys. And multi-grade can solve that with its own problems. Merging a class in Booth with a class in Burnham can solve that with its own problems. So we have to look in terms of which of these solutions is going to be best overall for the kids in the region. And that's what I want to try to do is get a little, just a little headway on that, knowing that at the moment, our plans are in a state of course that what we have in place.
Well, you only have someone for you to do that and then help in the presentation.
Yeah, Alan, what can I also point out?
Hold on, Greg.
My hand. How do you do this without breaking the regional contract if I'm reading you right? Well, how would you have certain grades shared at Roxbury versus Bridgewater?
Well, you see, that's the interesting thing is we've interpreted, we did a lot of interpretation about the regional plan when we talked about closing the three schools and building a new one. But the regional plan says there needs to be a school in each town, K5. But if you think about it, there's still a K5 in each town. You just don't have three, five in one town and one, two in the other. You still have the schools there. And with the flexibility of going back.
Look, we're not going to decide that issue tonight.
Right. So I mean, it's a tricky, it's a tricky situation. And who knows, it may have to go over. But the other thing too is that we have had situations before. Before, we've had a lot of litigation of the thing. This happened. But before that, we would have situations where a school, a class was converted for a year or Roxbury or Bridgewater swapped classes back in the last 20, 30 years.
It was construction.
Right. But that's the thing is we can also, this is tempering. If we're going to be, there's two ways to look at it. One is it's, you know, the primary report shows us going like this or they show us us pulling out of this and therefore we return and we have facilities available to be K5 in each town once again. So that's the thing. That's another aspect of the stickiness with that option. But we're going to go through that. We'll go through that too.
I was just going to say, you know, one interesting thing is the region does have experience, significant experience with multi-grade and multi-age classrooms. Roxbury was multi-grade for quite a number of years where you had grades one and two together. Where you, this is before you had kindergarten, grade one, two, grades three and four were together, and grades five and six, I think, were together at Booth Free School. So this has been an experience that they've had and worked quite well at the time. This was during a much earlier dip in enrollment in the region. So that's certainly something we have experience with and experience that seems to work. So that would be interesting to look at. And to have some of the people who actually attended that school at that point still living probably tell us a lot about that.
Peter?
Well, I could suggest something the board chairman and the superintendent should do is have the attorney clear the waters on this issue about who is...
Whether this plan proposed would violate...
Well, he hasn't got the plan yet before he even gets to the plan and wastes all the time and we discuss it. Find out from the board, from the board's attorney, what legally can we do as a board, what Alan was discussing regarding K1, 2, one building, three, four, five, another building, mixing up all sorts of groups. So before we get into lengthy discussions on this, what's doable legally and what isn't legally due based on the document that everybody's signed on two years ago. That's what I would suggest you do before we go down this road.
Well, I can do that if you want.
Well, I mean, you can ask the rest of the board members, but there's no sense going down the road and coming back to the board. We're all sitting here discussing.
He's going to give an opinion. You know, somebody else may have a different opinion. It's his professional opinion.
True.
Can I suggest?
But the bottom line is you never know in the world that it does.
I think, I think, I wouldn't want to pursue it, get an attorney involved, not only because of the expense, but because we've just settled this for now. And though it would be good to get kind of, you know, just kind of brainstorming situation, to get any deeper than that might be divisive. I mean, we've just settled this issue at least for the next few years, couple of years. And I don't know if we want to open that can of worms. I mean, we've said we are going to keep three elementary schools for now. And let's give it some time. That way lies distrust.
Or somebody could move to, ask me to prevent the long-range committee from considering this issue. That could be moved, I guess. Then I would instruct the chairman not to do that. I mean, that was off the table. I don't know if you said something you wanted to tonight. If you're not considering that. I mean, he's just asking to look into it. And I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah?
Yes.
I was at the last meeting, the long-range plan meeting. And my opinion as a leader of the region is to put this off until after September. We need to be focusing on Shapaw. We have two main initiatives there. We're trying to get the Agri-science program and we're trying to renovate our science labs. Once we put a K235 discussion out there, everything is going to boil back up, everything. And so...
It's not being proposed for this year.
Regardless, even to put, you know, we are working, we're running as fast as we can. Now we're going to start to...
I'm not talking about you.
Well, yes, you are. You are. When you talk about attorneys and everything else, you are.
Right, right.
And, and when I, to me, we're not doing anything next year. Everything is status quo as far as the classes. I don't see why we can't concentrate on Shapaw, get that through, move forward, and then in October, start to evaluate that. And when I was at the committee, I thought that that was the consensus. That's what I thought when I left that committee, but we'll, we'll...
Hold on.
So that's all I'm saying. I think that that's the best idea right now.
I unfortunately couldn't make the last meeting, but I did hear about it. And I think that if anything takes as long as it's taken us in the past, we most definitely have to keep looking at it all the way through from now until whenever. But I think we spent some time on the elementary school. It's now time to do something that we said we're going to do for Shapaw. If in the long range, we have to work the background on this, I think, until and through then. But I kind of agree, we did that referendum. If we need another elementary referendum, the high school.
Oh, yeah, that would be, yeah.
And I think they should be separate personally. But I think we should do the background work this whole time.
That's what I'm saying. This is just background because I, you know, my, my, my concept is that you can either say that either K235 or multi-grade requires a referendum because it is changing the fact there's a stipulated K5 in each room, in each, in each town. Or you can say neither one requires a referendum. You just kind of got to go with it. So that aside, just doing the groundwork for this is what I want to do, you know, not in any way, you know, not transparently, but without making it a, as Pat says, interfering issues with that. However, my concern is that there is, there could be seen as a necessity for some kind of direction along one or both of those avenues in order to give people confidence in voting for a Shapaw renovation. And that's, to me, I feel there is a linkage there because we are seeing our dwindling population, some of which will be solved by Agri-science, but it's... it's still dwindling and we are, people's dwindling based on the current situation of the elementary schools. There are people who are leaving Burnham because of, um, a multi-grade classroom situation where you're still having a tiny classroom with, with, you know, imbalance. And if that happens with Booth and Burnham in the near future, then we're going to have a drop in population that the AgriScience program will only partially be able to solve. And that's why I feel without, I totally appreciate without, um, in any way disturbing the, what should be full public enthusiasm for the AgriScience plan and the, and the science lab renovations, I also don't want to ignore the category of our public that is concerned that we're not going to have a viable school system that we're investing in with these two options, with these two projects, the renovations and the AgriScience. So that's what I'm trying to do is, as I said, I don't want to, to antagonize either side. I just want to make sure that we're as open-minded as possible so that we can keep everybody happy.
Alan is talking about discussions and investigations. And I think it's our fiduciary duty to participate in discussions and investigations about the status of the elementary schools. It's not true that we can't look at both Shapaw and the elementary schools at the same time. In fact, we did that. We presented a consolidated plan for the elementary schools and we also, at the same time, managed to present a very large repair proposal for Shapaw. So we have been working on both levels of schooling simultaneously in the past. There's no reason to abandon. We're working on sub-solutions for the elementary schools now. And in fact, I think it could be a real negative if Roxbury and Bridgewater residents don't feel that there's continual movement forward with the elementary schools. When it comes time to approving, Shapaw prepares a new plan. So I think we need to keep that in mind and be sensitive to those concerns if we want to move forward with some of the plans we share.
Thank you.
Um, I agree, being on the long-range planning committee, that it is a constant conversation that we need to be having. I think that would be, um, responsible for us to not continuously talk about improving and trying to find some sort of solution for the elementary schools. Um, but I also think that it is also okay to spend a little bit more of our energy and time now on Shapaw as we're still trying to figure out what the ideas could be. I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable though with one being contingent on the other. I don't know why we would need to necessarily say that in order to, um, say we're looking at the K-2, 3, 5, then all of a sudden we'll get maybe more support for the schools, the AgriScience, and Shapaw. I, I think that one doesn't have to be related to the other. It's all benefiting the region as a whole. What we're doing at Shapaw is benefiting the elementary schools. And I think that's okay. I don't think we're saying we're choosing one over the other. I think that we're focusing on everything. That's what Pat, Dr. Costino does. She, she doesn't just focus on one grade or one school. She's doing the job of the whole region. But sometimes some things take more energy. As we know, we spent a lot of energy on consolidating the elementary schools and even though we were still being mindful about it here, it wasn't, the full focus wasn't up here. So I, I don't know why we need to really rock the boat. We can have our conversations about how we can improve our elementary schools. I think that they're wonderful schools, but in terms of balancing the classroom, we can brainstorm that. I don't think we need to be public about it so that we're rocking the boat and doing that at the meeting.
Anyone else?
I think clarity is going to be the one, um, the one thing that, that will help. With the long-range plan, uh, planning committee focus on the elementary schools and look to the future.
Right.
What, uh, how are the elementary schools going to address enrollment accordingly? I would not want anything kind of getting in the way of the focus. The, it's a very intense focus that's going to be coming up when it comes to the AgriScience and moving forward with that. Clarity in the information and, and being very clear that it is a subcommittee that is taking a look at, not the full board, but taking a look and investigating. And however, um, however that clarity can be added, so there's not misinformation that's out there because that festers some anxiety. And with that comes, um, this, this almost immediate need to sort of address and put out fires and it, it causes the attention to be pulled away. So I'm all for the long-range planning committee as a subcommittee of the board, um, continuing their work. That's what you are tasked to do and it's, it's by no means an, an easy task. Um, but I would want every effort being made to, especially at this tender time, to not take the, um, the attention away from, from what else is going on at Shapaw. You know, the AgriScience program is huge. Finding out the funding is going to be huge. We need that referendum. We need a positive, unified voice going forward for the pending referendum coming up in, in the fall. And we're not going to have a lot of lead time leading up to a referendum. So we, and this is, you know, this is already springtime. We need to make sure that there's no, no misinformation or, um, needless concerns out there, that something is bubbling up when, when clearly there's no change in here.
What did you say?
Well, I consider this settled law. I mean, we've already picked around consolidation and what to do with the elementary schools and now it's time to move forward. And I think your committee to have conversations in general, certainly without spending money on an attorney, um, because that shows a commitment by the board to investigate, which scares me. I think, I think we, this is not the time to rattle pitches. This is not the time to upset people. The reverberations of what goes on here, believe it or not, the reverberations of what happens is open to misinterpretation and rumor and concern. And I think be creative all day long in long-range planning, just don't put too much emphasis on too many changes and don't codify it at this stage because it is going to be open to misinterpretation. We saw an example tonight that the gentleman was sitting there, she, Pat said very clearly consolidation is gone, we're done, we're done, we're done. It was in black and white and still there was a misinterpretation. That's the problem. So if you push too hard on one angle, it will be totally blown out of all reality and this is not the time. The time is settle law, we know what we're doing, we have a plan for at least the next couple of years. If there's a change in direction because of one thing or another, we can react fairly quickly because we've been kicking around these, these different ideas forever. Let's not waste much more time on it. If we need to ramp it up at some future date, fine, not now.
Okay. Anyone else? I would hope that the superintendent's plan given to us tonight said the first line of three elementary schools, all male, remaining each town. So that's a good
I, she says it again and again and again and I still can't get it.
I, I do want to let you know that this conversation came up at the meeting with Ann Baldwin, with our little group a couple of weeks ago. And Ann made it very clear that this is not about elementary schools right now. This is about Shapaw and getting that AgriScience program going and the science labs. And don't mix the message. And that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying not to explore, but right now it has to be about Shapaw because we're already in the middle of March. Before you know it, it's going to be East Spring Break, we're going to be back and, you know, we have so much to do just to get ready for the AgriScience Center and the science area that I, you know, to muddy that up is, to me, it doesn't make any sense because there's no urgency right now. We'll have plenty of time in October to look at it, to, to vet it, to, you know.
Plus we have a budget.
Yeah, plus we have a budget.
I just, uh, hope that since what we're doing at Shapaw is going to benefit all three towns, all three, all four schools, I would hope and pray that everybody in all three towns supports it, regardless of what's going on outside of Shapaw's four walls. And that's my
I understand that when Alan was trying to address that, he said it's the structure of each one, contents of the school and how to maximize it. And that, the lack of that, at this point, I think what he was saying is the lack of that is undermining, uh, people. It wasn't going to lead to district. I'm not su- I don't necessarily accept that. I don't have the knowledge and maybe someone will do it, but it's not my understanding that's a big problem, to be frank. It is true that we, you know, I, I, I appreciate the fact that it needs to be resolved. Some people think it has been resolved. Problem is in response to Valerie's question, nothing is settled on our board of education. It can always be revisited upon motioning. Hopefully there are things should be settled. It's a good way to operate and to have, you know, from backbone, but, uh, things can be revisited. Susan?
I think the spirit of that is, and that investigation is all about, um, maintaining a high-quality education and addressing declining enrollment. Um, we need to be sort of selfie and, uh, be able to shape-shift accordingly without sacrificing and yet addressing, uh, the numbers, the, the whatever that, the 26,000 per pupil enrollment that's going to hang out there is something that is, uh, quite daunting. So we have said before in no uncertain terms, it's not a matter of education at any cost, but preserving high-quality education and, and providing, um, uh, that in, in all four of the schools. So to investigate ways to make them happen.
Which we are doing.
And bring that number, um, down is, uh, I mean, that's a responsible thing to do.
Quick one number then.
The top being per pupil.
All of them. Anyone else?
Can I ask a question about, uh, New Basements real quick?
I know what you need to do.
We have the budget presented and, um,
We haven't presented yet.
I know. We're going to go on to do this at the same point.
Yeah.
I'm just asking about when, looking at the calendar for future meetings and the fact that we just talked about an education committee meeting about multi-age, is there any way we can go through the budget any time sooner?
When's the budget meeting?
Well, March 6. Uh, no, March 23rd.
And we
We could do some
Somebody during that meeting?
Yes.
Go through the budget?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Sweet. So we don't have to wait until the sixth?
No. No, it's going to be part of the discussion on the
As part of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, March 23rd. All right. Any old business? Are there any questions for Alan for a long while? And seven old business, is there any old business? But maybe it's new business. I'm sorry if you
I have an, I have an issue, but I didn't ask us to amend the agenda. And it's a point.
Well, all right, let's do new business first. Alan, give your point. Eight point one. Consider request for Gunn Memorial Library to use Lawson Primary School for the Washington, Connecticut Antique Show, waiving policy prohibiting alcoholic beverages for two weeks. Friday, October 9th and Saturday, October 10th, 2015.
So
Second. Michelle moves and Alan second. I ask for amendment, please. Just per approve with the usual stipulation we have in the past.
Right.
You know alcoholic beverages in the school during any time any employee is there. We have a bunch of stipulations.
Yeah, they, they're right. Because typically they don't set up until, on Friday especially, until all the students are
So if you'll accept that as a amendment, then
So they
Anything else, Susan?
Do they carry their home insurance right or on the
That's one of the other stipulations.
Okay.
Anyone else?
You have to use the building
Yeah. It's a, it's a recent and it's theirs and they make good, well, and they own a facility very much.
And they get back to the school. Now with our kids to come down, they have the power, Washington Primary Kids do the art project that's on display. It's, it's really wonderful.
All those in face, say hi. Can you post? Maybe see.
The point I wanted to make in the meeting.
Alan moved to a jerk.
No, Dave. Oh, come on.
We couldn't change up when you were public comment, but now maybe we can. Go ahead, Ann.
That's the point that I'd like to make. We, we have, I would estimate 100 millionaires living in these three towns, easily. And there's not one of their names in any part of our educational system. Not in the science lab, not in any of these rooms, not in any of the primary schools. We haven't tapped the biggest resource in these three towns and that's the many millionaires and the multi-millionaires that live in these three towns. And somehow we need to tap that resource. We need to find a mechanism to get their names on our school system.
We'll be seeing you after the meeting.
You see, not at private schools, you see it.
Yes, of course.
You see it there. We never see it here.
It's private. Isn't that public?
That's a word public, the public should not be, the word public